All right, it is 6:41. We'll call the June 5th special meeting of the South Pasadena Public Safety Commission to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dismarias.
Present.
Commissioner Munoz. Commissioner Cervantes. Commissioner Gee. Commissioner Osiroff. Absent. Vice Chair Watson.
Here.
And Chair Donnelly.
Present. Also, please note that our council liaison, Michael Cacciotti, is present as well. Um, let's move right to general public comment. Do we have anything?
No public comment.
All right. Uh, first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting from March 13th. Uh, I'm sorry, from April 10th. Um, has everyone had a chance to review it? Are there any notes or edits? Did we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Cervantes, uh, second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Watson. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dismarias.
Approve.
Commissioner Munoz. Commissioner Cervantes. Commissioner Gee. Vice Chair Watson.
Approve.
And Chair Donnelly.
Approve. So our main order of business tonight is a presentation from the Raff Tellis Group regarding their assessment of the South Pasadena Police Department. Um, I'd like to welcome them to the podium and I'll let you introduce yourselves and explain your work.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you, commissioners. Thank you for having us. Uh, we are from Raff Tellis and we will do introductions in just one moment to give you a little of our background and history. Um, our introduct- our, our agenda tonight is very simple. We're really just going to talk about, um, the city's hiring of us to do a police department staffing and operations analysis. We're going to talk about that project, what that entails, the process involved with that, and give you a status update of where we are in the process. We're going to talk a little about some of the key themes we're seeing to date. We're not done it by any means. We're in the middle of this process, but we'll give you a few tidbits of what we're seeing to date. And then we have an interactive session we'd like to participate in with you all and any audience members, both physically and on Zoom, to talk to us, um, to answer a few questions, to get some more information. We're really in a fact finding mode to learn about South Pasadena and what your local policing and law enforcement needs are. Um, and then at the end, we'll, we'll give some parting thoughts and next steps. Presenters, I'm Rebecca Hoskin. I have over 30 years of experience in local government and consulting to local governments. Raff Tellis is a firm specializes in public sector consulting. So we work for cities, counties, special districts, utilities across the country. We have 14 offices and I work out of the Los Angeles office. And I'm going, and I'm a former, uh, city budget officer and finance director. And I'm going to let my colleague Cassandra Deck Brown introduce her soft brief.
Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, first of all, thank you for allowing us to have this time with you all in the community. Um, I am Cassandra Deck Brown. I've spent 34 years in law enforcement, uh, working my way up through the ranks from rookie all the way up through police chief. Uh, and I've been on both sides of the coin in, in terms of, or both sides of the table in terms of working with companies who are conducting analyses on a department. Um, but now being on the other side and being able to assist in that regard uh, as it relates to best practices and working towards efficiencies. So thank you all. Thank you all.
Oh, it's hard to see. I apologize. When we have our discussions and this really applies more to later and the interactive piece, we really have a few ground rules our firm tends to share. And it's just to keep the conversation civil and to make sure that everyone can be heard. We like to be very fair and, and based and grounded in our discussions. We ask folks to turn off their cell phone ringers, um, not to interrupt. Agree disagreeably, the point of this discussion is to hear all the points of view and they may not always be the same. So we want to hear them all equally, uh, to listen with respect and be positive and constructive. We're really here to listen and learn, and that's really the goal of our being here tonight. So we're looking forward to that discussion. And this, these norms just we found in our meetings help us to build respectful dialogue that gives everyone a chance. So, um, we wanted to share that. In terms of our project and our status update, let's start at the basics. And again, who is Raff Tellis? We're a local government financial management consulting firm. We have 14 offices nationwide. We have extensive policing assessment experience. We've done this in over 75 communities across the country. Um, and so this is a, a, a task that we're, we're accustomed to with the knowledge that every community is unique and we don't have cookie cutter recommendations. We try very hard to know and understand the unique context in each community we work in so that whatever we recommend in the end is very practical and implementable for that community. How was Raff Tellis chosen for this work? Um, it was a standard bidding process. The city advertised in September of 2022. Um, my understanding is the city formed a working group internally to do the evaluations of those proposals. We proposed, we were one of the five firms that sent something into the city and apparently they selected two for interviews and we were selected. So it was an open bidding process and that's how we are here. Um, Raff Tellis's organizational assessment goal was, you know, really to answer these questions. If you ask, why were we hired? What is it we're here to do? This is the answer. This is our scope of work for this project. It's to answer the questions, how do we improve South Pasadena Police Department service to the community? Is the department staffed and structured appropriately to meet community needs and expectations now and into the future? Are there gaps in specific services? And if so, how do we fill those? On the converse, we always like to say, we also like to ask, what are we doing well? And what do we want to continue and keep, keep going? And finally, in the end, our service is fair and equitable to all. Those are the reasons we were hired and, and the questions we're seeking to answer in our report and our resulting recommendations. That's the scope of our, for our organizational assessment. So what are the steps of our process? Um, we're, again, as I said in the bottom, I apologize, the white font is hard to read on the presentation screen. Um, I'll try to make it clear. So we're, uh, we, we have a four step process essentially, and we've outlined that here. The very beginning is beginning the engagement. What we do is we meet with the city and the department just to introduce ourselves and walk through the goals of the study. Make sure we're all on the same page of where we're going. We then do just fact finding, collect data and documents for their analysis so that we can start crunching numbers from calls for service and all the other documents and information. And then we finalize a project schedule. We just all agree, starting on this date, where are we going to go and what, what's the end result? From there, we go into assessing structure and staffing and we really start the onsite work. We came onsite, what was it, a couple of months ago? Um, interviewed a lot of folks in the city, um, both leadership in the department as well as other city departments. Um, reviewed the schedule and organization structure for the staff, uh, patrol schedules, detectives, the, all the staff in the PD. Conducted benchmarking and industry best practices. We're in the process of doing that, kind of comparing your department against some others of similar size. And developing online surveys. We have two surveys open right now. If you haven't heard, there's a community wide survey that's out there and we have information on that at the end. That's open through this week, through Saturday. So we're encouraging everyone, if you haven't filled it out, please do. And then we also had an internal survey for the PD staff as well to get their perspective on things. Um, right now, we're in the middle of the third activity, which is conducting site visit. Um, we're back, we're interviewing some more folks and, and stakeholders in the community of various folks who are in organizations as well as the commissioners here. Um, we're interviewing the public safety commissioners. We're presenting tonight and we're just soliciting a lot of information. This is also where we're going to analyze that survey feedback as well. So this is sort of the public engagement piece, if you will. We're trying to, we're going to crunch the numbers and do that piece, but we also want to talk to folks and figure out what people in the, in the community really want and need. And then the next phase, which goes July to August essentially, is to prepare the deliverables, the report. Um, we're going to prepare our preliminary observations and recommendations. This is where we take everything we've gotten and stirred up in a pot and see what our recommendations are going to be. And we will create a report out of that and we basically share what we saw, what we think the city needs to do and why, and, and talk about that. Um, and then we're going to be presenting that report to the city council. I don't believe there's a date set yet, but I think it's August is the goal. And then we will also have some additional public discussion then as well. So that is the process and the project steps. And before I move on, any questions on that or? Hold up. Okay. Themes to date, I'm going to turn this over to Cassandra, just, just again, to reiterate, we are not at any conclusive point in this project. We're in the middle. Um, but we have identified a few themes, just generally very basic stuff. We wanted to share those so far with you, just to see if they resonate, because if they don't, we want to hear about that as well. And then we also, um, would ask that people speak up so that, you know, we can get recording on flip charts and whatnot when we're talking later. But, um, anyway, I'm going to let Cassandra talk a little bit about the themes we're seeing.
I'm sorry, before you do, Commissioner Watson, I would like, um, I was wondering when you say the data collection, what type of data were you collecting?
We're, um, working on calls for service. Cassandra, can you answer that a little more? You probably know more.
We're looking at the calls for service and we understand there is a, we know that there's a new RMS system within the department. In addition to that, we are also looking at, um, not just calls for service, but calls for service are usually divided into several categories. One is self-initiated. What calls are those officers out there taking? Taken the, their initiative to do so. The other part is who generates a non-emergency or a 911 call? Um, those are not self-initiated. They're 911 driven and looking at that, looking at the response to those calls. But we're also looking at case investigation. Um, what does, what does a, a case look like from the time it's received from the report to the conclusion? And what case clearance looks like as well? Um, that, we know that there are, um, and it's not just the, the calls for service, but then those calls for service are broken down into various categories as well. What kind of time are you spending on calls? And usually calls are prioritized. And, and so how long is it taken to get to those calls? But also what types of calls are being resp- are being requested for police service in the city? That allows us to take an assessment at the end of all of this to determine whether or not there could be calls. I'm not saying that this is the case, but historically it gives us also an opportunity to look at alternative, um, models of policing. Are there co-policing responses or different types of response? Is there something that could be privatized? Is there something that could be civilianized that an officer may currently be doing? So it gives us the opportunity to look at that totality of calls for service. But basically from the birth of the call to the conclusion of the call, up to including how it gets to court. How much time officers are spending in court? What does proactive time look like? In terms of engaging versus reactive time where you're just taking the call and going to the, and going to the scene. And so looking at all of that to ultimately determine how the department can be most effective and how it can be most efficient in delivering the services to the greater community. Okay, so as we talk about themes to date, um, and, and this, I would say is, is a key piece in this space here. Cause a lot of times folk really do wonder, well, what's going on with the surveys? What's going on with this time that's being spent since they've launched this project? And so this kind of gives you an idea of some of what we've seen thus far. As Rebecca had already mentioned, we've been, we've been here once. So we spent several days here several months ago, um, doing the internal piece. And we have since then had, um, I, most of those were online with your elected officials as well. I remember, uh, you from the call as well. Um, and so it gives us the, the opportunity now to come and do the public side, the community engagement. You can't quite talk about public service without speaking to the recipients of those services as well. So this is what we're doing in this space and time now. The, the basic information and, and there again, these are just things. Um, but what we're seeing through the, um, combination of interviews and conversations that we've had, uh, as well as looking at where we are thus far in the survey. So we've been looking at the survey information as it's coming in. So that's another piece of data that gets collected and processed in the greater, uh, recommendations list. And some of the things that we're seeing so far is just from a, a general context of the department itself, that you all have a diverse community and there's clearly a high level of service, um, and expectation in that regard as well. Um, the department's personnel resources have pretty much remained, um, the same for a while, a number of years. So looking at that as well, but also looking to see what's different from, you know, the last time you had positions added versus to, to date. Um, looking at the heavy commuter population, uh, from both highway and train commuter. And then looking at community focus as it relates to, and Rebecca kind of hit on this earlier. Looking at the community's focus in terms of equity and justice in regards to policing. What those policing services look like? Is it equitable? Um, what does treatment look like? What does fairness look like? Looking at the totality of that piece as well. We're also taking a look to see where those strengths are. And usually when there is a request for an assessment of sorts, um, someone within the organization uh, decides that there's a need to take a closer look at what, what we're doing. Are we doing things really well? Are we doing things not, not so well? Uh, could we be more effective? Could we be more efficient in what we do? And so usually these assessments come by way of that. And one of the, the other themes that we're seeing is that, um, there is a desire within the organization to deliver a high quality of service. So, uh, we're also seeing that, uh, there's a family atmosphere among staff here. Um, and, and there's flexibility with the staff in some of the work assignments and the delivery of the services as well. We are also, we've been made aware, um, of the, uh, the pilot. Uh, you all have a, a mental health co-response model that's already underway. Um, so we are aware of that. And so we want to also take a look to see what those best practices are, um, as it relates to, to rendering, um, such a service. And there are, the, the thing about co-response and, and those types of alternative responses, um, particularly to the community, uh, to the mental health, uh, respondents. Um, there are programs that have been out there for 50 years. And there are programs that have sort of jumped off since 2020. And so really looking to see where the best practices are, um, across the spectrum, um, is key as well in this regard. We also take a look at the challenges. And, and I would just say that the challenges are not necessarily a surprise to us because you're kind of hearing some of this across the, the, the country, particularly as it relates to staffing. Um, what we will do is take a look at minimal staffing, uh, and what that require, what is required from a minimal staffing level within this organization? How many personnel are needed to get the job done? Um, that doesn't mean that that's where we stop, but we have to, as, as part of the overall assessment, it's important to know the basic need that you have to render the service that is required to be delivered. We're also looking at, and I've mentioned this in the beginning, reactive police response versus proactive policing engagement. Um, and, and just to kind of put that in a, a little bit of a perspective, that really, um, i- is assessing not only the response to a, I'll say 911 call or a non-emergency call, but, but what else happens after that? Is there a connection made? Is there community, communication made? Is it a, is it a one and done, so to speak? Um, you know, if, if I respond to a break in at your home and I've taken a little time to just talk about how perhaps you can enhance the safety at your residence so that, so that you're not a repeat victim at the end of the day. It won't necessarily guarantee it, but are there some other tips that I could provide that would allow you to target hardened your residents? Looking at, um, increasing compliance as it relates to, uh, reporting as well. Um, taking a look at how reports are filed, um, looking at, um, how complete they are, is the information there? Can the detective take that and run with it? And, and all points in between, but just really looking at the birth of a report, so to speak. And are there other methods in the community by which you can respond? Is there a necessity to have an officer to every, every event that you have where you file a report? Or are there opportunities down the road for an electronic means? So wanting to look at all the possible options to make sure that reporting opportunities can be as effective and efficient as they can be also. Looking at deterrence, outreach and education. That's a lot in those three words. Um, how do you deter crime? What does it look like? Um, what is the population that you would necessarily be looking at to deter? Is there a possibility of outreach? We, we, we had, uh, we referenced the mental health earlier and I know that the last line in here speaks to the, the homeless and the unhoused and quality of life, quality of life for everybody. Um, when we're talking about equity, but also, um, are there other outreach opportunities and possibilities and resources? Um, that could be tapped into and how efficient is the current outreach effort? And are there other things to consider based on best practices across the country? And, uh, jumping back up from, from the, the homeless and unhoused line is looking at the commuter population and the increased traffic volume. So these are some of the themes that you all are already, uh, are, are, was, was identified, um, either through some of the surveys or what we got in the initial interviews. And then looking at opportunity. Anytime you're going to look at what's not necessarily working, the optimist in me would always say, then look to see where additional opportunities are. Um, and that would include basically, as I referenced earlier, is rightsizing in agency, rightsizing the department. Do you have the right number of staff to handle the workload that's currently being required of the individuals within the organization? Do you have the right number of personnel to work within and engage the community? Um, and to meet those expectations, uh, and the workload demand that's placed on whatever those assignments are. I'm looking at how the department can be more proactive and more engaging with the community. What does that look like? There again, it's not a one and done. It's not, um, it's not a cookie cutter approach. Because the different needs of the community may dictate a different type of outreach, a different type of engagement with the, the greater community. Enhancing property crime response, looking at that investigation, as I mentioned, talking about the detective's role, but looking at the, looking at the case. Um, how do they, how efficiently are they looking at the, the crimes across the board, so to speak? Are there trends and patterns? Can they identify them? Are there mechanisms in place that allow them to see those things? Is there enough staff that allows them to help identify what those means are, what those issues are? And then how do they feed that back? What does that look like? Um, cultivating staff diversity at all levels. And, and really taking a look to see how across the board, um, the department can best represent, uh, the members of the community. And, and what that looks like. And, and, and they, that may come with recommendations, um, for, um, recruitment to, to hire. Um, and it may come with civilian recommendations. It, it just, it's the broader approach and looking at the organization. Um, focusing on training and professional development and formalizing that process. Looking at not only what is required as a mandate, because you know that the, the post, the police officer standards and training will dictate a certain amount of training that all officers in the state of California have to, have to meet every year. But then looking to see based on either needs, wants and wishes out of the surveys and the, and the, the ser- uh, the interviews, are there some other opportunities for training that may not currently exist? And what does that look like based on the other issues that rise out of the survey and the other work that we do? Um, and then also looking at what, at the end of all of this, what does building trust with the community look like? And part of that is what we will glean from many of you tonight and through those surveys as well. What does trust look like? And sometimes that is, um, a third part of response. There are probably several people in your community that have never had any encounter whatsoever with the police department. There are others who have decided what their relationship is with police because they've had a relative or a friend or somebody else who's impacted. And then there's the individual who has had a direct impact, has directly been impacted by a relationship on lack thereof of the organization. And so understanding what that looks like, but also being able to identify best practices to build trust going forward. Okay. Questions? That's all.
So that was a talking at you piece of this, and now we'd like to talk with you. And, uh, we have five prompts we wanted to ask to try to get some input from both commissioners and the public, um, both here and on Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand in the forum and we've got folks monitoring that will let us know if you'd like to respond. Um, but we have a couple of prompts and, uh, Cassandra and I would love to pick your brains and, uh, we'll be recording things on flip charts. And, uh, also, how do you want to do the microphone? We'll be doing them. We have a wireless mics we can hand out and then we have, uh, in the interest of COVID prevention, we have some disinfectant wipes to use in between. So bear with us. We, we apologize for that, but we want to make sure everybody's safe. So, hope you understand. Okay.
Okay. First question. Think about your sense of safety. And think about the safety of your community at large. And so the first question is, what should your police department do to focus on the most? To improve your sense of safety?
Can you hear me? Okay.
I'm not sure whether you want names or?
I talk a lot. I'm, I'm coming to you as a... I never thought about it a lot before, but in the last... In this year, things have started changing. Um, when I first returned to South Pasadena, I was still the only black, what people consider the only black woman in my part of the neighborhood. And have been since 1981, when I bought here. And I had a good relationship with my neighbors in 1981. I ran for political office in 1990 and started getting threats. And that has colored my perspective ever since and how I react to certain things. But in this year, this year, 2023, uh, let me back up. In 2022, I started working with our PD. And, uh, there were some things that needed some attention. And in the course of that time, there have been some dramatic improvements. And I messaged the PD department to let them know what has been happening. But in this year, things have started changing and in this past month, there has been dramatic slippage. And I feel, right now, I feel as though I'm living in the, in the middle of the Ukraine. Because, excuse me. Because I'm getting trespasses and vandalism on a weekly basis, on a weekly basis. And they're distractions to the things that I'm trying to do to build my business and build my life and build my opportunities. And I'm getting angry about it. And I'm getting angry about the, the, one of, one of my, my next door neighbor has admitted that they've been defaming me. They've admitted to others that they've vandalized my property. There's a, some, a neighbor up the street from me who has admitted that he is trespassing my property and harvesting my tree in order to, so that he doesn't have to go to the grocery store and buy oranges. my tree in order to, so that he doesn't have to go to the grocery store and buy oranges. And in this last month, the responses when I call and report incidents is, oh, that's not really a crime. We won't, we don't need to do anything. I feel as though I'm being forced to either sit and take it and feel like I'm being raped. Or go out and do something about it. And I've got, I'm, I'm notorious now for my spray bottle of vinegar. I know how to use it. But I don't have a sense of safety anymore. I don't have a sense of safety. And I'm trying to work on that.
Others? Does anyone else have?
Okay, just to follow up on what the first speaker said. Take it seriously. If it's serious to us, then take it seriously. You may not think it's, it's any big deal to, but it is. So take it seriously. On a separate note, what, uh, would improve my sense of safety is the traffic. Like everyone here kind of knows that whether you're in a car or on a bike or you're a pedestrian, you just don't feel safe all the time everywhere. And, uh, and I know that's a, an ongoing effort between the police and the Public Works Department and education. But that is, that's one of the big things that, that my sense of safety for that. Uh, yes, and, uh, Public Works does know, and I think the police department knows, Fair Oaks, Meridian, Ringo, Fremont. For me, it's the, uh, Fair Oaks Bridge over the freeway. Cause once I get away from those streets, then there's very little traffic and I can walk wherever I want to. But, uh, but I think everyone knows those streets. I don't know the east-west streets as well, or, or the ones that are on the periphery as well. Um, I've heard some reports about Huntington and Orange Grove. And again, if you go back through the reports, you'll probably see this.
Um, I'm also aware of some traffic issues that have been taking place on, uh, Fletcher as well. It seems to be a common pathway. Oh, I'm sorry. There's, uh, there's another street that I think we should put on that list here, there, um, Fletcher, because it's a pathway to the traffic lights between the main street to the main Huntington Drive. They've become like a freeway. And I've been there many times where there's been a lot, a lot of, uh, potential accidents that could happen or somebody you hit. And that's true, the people just dip right through there. I just want to add to the, uh, sense of safety. Basically, I've worked with main street projects, I've worked with cities in the past. And the key thing is to come up with a common goal, make your priorities with the goal, but organize, number one, organize, plan. And, uh, communicate. Needs to be more communication. I don't know what the mode of communication is. It's just, some people tend to think it's a virtual communication, but what about the real communication? We still need to talk to each other. And that seems to be lacking. Um, I remember when I first came in the community in the eighties, everybody had a strong role, everybody defined their roles. And talked about their roles in terms of what they did in the community. I don't see that happening anymore. And I kind of think that needs to be reinforced back into the community to make it aware, awareness, communication. Talk about your goals, talk about your safety. Talk about what you need to do, communicate. It's not happening.
My name is Judy Harris and I'm a thirty-some years citizen of the city. Uh, I am an avid walker. I, uh, have encountered nu- numerous, almost daily, I'm almost killed in a crosswalk when I have the right of way. I think we need many more crosswalks. I've seen in Pasadena flashing lights alerting people at crosswalks and other cities also, some have yellow, some have red. Uh, I noticed there are so many problems with infrastructure, with bad streets, bad sidewalks. Revilia, for one, is a very quick thoroughfare across the city, but it is in such disrepair. And actually, it's filthy dirty. There are always, it's disgusting. There, there are always pieces on the sidewalk. Some of the residents say that some of the unhoused people will sleep there and that is from them. I think people don't pick up after their dogs. But, um, I see a real problem with, with traffic safety. This city should be extremely safe and walkable and it's not anymore. It's getting much worse around the library at night, around the train. Um, the alleys in the city need to be better lit and lighting is a real problem in the city. Especially at night, I look at Meridian, um, around the train station. There are no lights on the east side of the street, no street light. So I don't know where this money's coming from for infrastructure, but there are so many things that need to be taken care of. And I do understand that the city is now addressing some of the simpler infrastructure problems. But I think some of these traffic issues absolutely need to be addressed. And also the safety is with the health and sanitation in this city. So one more thing is the parks. And the parks over the pandemic have become full of unhoused people at night. And I've made numerous complaints, numerous. I'm on a first-name basis with Shiana Robleto because of that. And, um, it, it's sanitation, it's safety. Uh, there are so many things that need to happen and the police were not doing extra patrols. They were not, uh, enforcing the, um, perfumes. It, it, it really, these are things that need to be addressed because I can tell you, I tried to go out to my garbage can in the back of my, uh, property, um, in an alley, and there was a naked guy back there digging our trash. So, okay, thanks, thank you.
Just, I want to add one more thing is that today where we have the, uh, we have a lot of new communities that have infrastructure that are built in with the modern technology, cameras and security system. I, South Pasadena is an old community. Needs to be maybe upgraded to a certain point where its infrastructure needs to be upgraded. For example, why do we still have wires hanging over our trees? Why do our, why do we have certain things that were back in the nineteen twenties and thirties? This is two thousand twenty-three, this is over, you know, ninety, ninety years of the time span or more that hasn't been upgraded. This city needs an upgrade in the infrastructure that might help safety features that need to be included in today's modern world. In today's environment and from today's infrastructure. I mean, gas lines, sewer lines. Everything needs to be, can be considered, I mean, to upgrade from what it was when we first started the community back in the forties or thirties, when they, when they inserted, inserted all this infrastructure. So I'm saying, hey, it might be something to look at, to upgrade, to consider what needed today that wasn't available, that wasn't required when they first put the infrastructure. Just my thoughts.
Thank you.
One of the things that would help my sense of safety would be getting back to the standards we had in the eighties where neighbors actually talked and socialized with one another. We're, we're not having, I don't have that luxury anymore. Just a hand, a handful, I could count on this hand are ones who are willing to actually talk. We're not socializing, but we're at least talking. The other thing is I'm doing, taking more and more steps to increase the security around my house. I just added security, uh, uh, security gates on my driveway. I'm now going to be adding security cameras. That wasn't necessary before. In the nineteen eighties, you could park your car in the grocery parking lot and leave the windows down and you could come back and find everything still intact. But the other thing is, I feel as though I'm now living among criminals and crazies, literally. The one neighbor two houses over acts like a criminal, no, the one next door acts like a criminal. And then there are others who have psychological difficulties that are observable. And so it would, it would, and when the cameras were purchased, it was a white company who purchased them for me and supported the vandalism, which was nearly during the flood. But why did he get a res- why did he get a response? And I could not.
Thank you. And I, I just want to say that, uh, you all have shared a lot of information. Um, not all of it can be done by the police department. So we will definitely pass those notes on to the right, um, departments and share it accordingly. But, but I do want to make sure before we move on to the next question that you all have answered this question as it pertains to what can your department do?
Hi, I'm Jerry Lynn Schmidt and I'm a longtime resident as well. Um, all these are good issues. The only, I just did one little tiny comment was, um, police, um, I've noticed what, something when I'm walking is that there's a, I think, very large increase of people with super dark tinting on the driver's side windows. And it makes it very hard to tell if someone is actually seeing you. And so I would, I mean, I would appreciate if they would start ticketing that heavily so that at least hopefully people in our area would, would, you know, they'll have to get a fix-it ticket. Hopefully it'll make it, you know, too, too expensive for them to maintain their super dark tinting.
We can't, we have, we have a caller on Zoom.
Mr. Kelly, you can go ahead and speak. Hello, Mr. Kelly on Zoom, you do have your computer.
I'm sorry, uh, there seems to be a problem with the audio on this Zoom. I can barely hear much of what's going on, but, uh, thank you. Uh, yes, I wanted to address, uh, pedestrian and bicycle traffic safety. And, uh, I, I feel that, uh, situation in South Pasadena is that there's more and more, uh, traffic, um, going both north, south and east, west. And that, uh, drivers are distracted, they're in a rush, they're going over to San Marino, that sort of thing. And there are some very dangerous intersections here. Uh, the police have, uh, I believe, made an effort to place traffic officers, uh, you know, around the corner to find, uh, uh, people that are, you know, doing rolling stops or speeding, that sort of thing. But, uh, that, that seems to be hit or miss. And I believe that the police can't really handle this, that what you really need to do is focus on engineered traffic controls, speed humps, speed bumps, better, uh, flashing lights, intersections. I'm even in favor of, uh, using cameras, uh, and, and, um, trying to, uh, you know, ticket people that way systematically. Because I, I think it really, you, you can't have an officer on every corner. And, um, you know, the reason people are speeding is because the roads are not paying attention are busy and they're wide, you know, there's nothing that's slowing them down. And I know people who have been hit by cars, uh, in my neighborhood. Uh, close calls, I think even a crossing guard for the city, uh, I've heard was, was hit near one of the schools, uh, although not injured. So I, I think this is a public works problem, uh, that money needs to be devoted to. And the idea that, uh, the police can solve this, uh, is, uh, you know, uh, I, I, I think they can try, but they can't solve these types of problems. It really requires, uh, better engineered roads and controls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So our next question is about community policing. And, uh, if you're not familiar, community policing is sort of that proactive piece we were talking about of engaging with the community more directly to get to know the neighborhoods, for the officers to get to know people and know the neighborhoods and understand what's happening, um, before they're responding to calls. And so we want to ask here in South Pasadena, what does community policing mean to you? What does it look like here in South Pasadena? And how can officers better connect with the community in your view? This is not to say they aren't, but we're just saying how better could they? Any comments? Any comments?
As I said, I talk a lot. Last year and I think part of the year before, I had some experiences with our PD that were, that were very impressive. The officers who came out started building a rapport with me, getting to know things that are, that are special to know about health conditions, past history, so that they could respond in a more appropriate way. And I really appreciate the fact that they know that if I've, I've got a particular health condition and they can relate because they've got the same thing and they know what special steps need to be taken in order to make sure I'm okay. Um, they know me by name. And because of the work that I've been doing with the PD, uh, I've almost gotten to know the, everyone on the force by first name. And, and they hear me, they hear me. As I said, in this last month, things have changed, but I understand that there, there's been a crop of new people coming in. That might be part of the answer. But getting to know your constituents, getting to know the ones in your, on your beat has really been significant.
Hi, Helen Tran with Care First South Pasadena, where a community group focused on police reform and budget issues. I think to answer the third bullet point about how officers can better connect with the community, um, one thing that's top of mind for us is for more accountability when the police does do something wrong. Um, something that struck me as pretty surprising was when Cassandra mentioned, maybe it was a little bit unclear about how this assessment came about within the city. Um, this really came from a community demand for more police auditing and accountability within the department following a string of incidents that happened in twenty twenty with Black Lives Matter protesters. Um, the police didn't provide basic policing to demonstrators and that was a clear, um, to us clear evidence of bias along political lines and also racial lines. And then after those incidents, fifty-three complaints from citizens were filed with the city. And amongst those complaints, the independent And amongst those complaints, the independent investigator found several or numerous incidents of wrongdoing with the police department, including not accurately documenting incidents, not following its own hate crimes policy to investigate hate crimes when they actually, um, occurred against black members of our community. And also not using or turning on their body cameras when they were supposed to. So that led to deficient reporting and an inability for the DA to actually prosecute the hate crime. And through all that, there was no public accountability from the police department about what they could improve on, why things went so south with what happened in twenty twenty. And then layers on top of that, in twenty twenty-two, just last year, Occidental professors did their own independent study of many of the measures that you all were brought into to look at, including dispatch data, arrest data, um, evidence of racial disparities and the rest. We presented all of that objective data and findings to the police department and we didn't hear one word back on why there are racial disparities, why Latinx people are being arrested at a higher rate. Um, why so many, um, of the police resources are dedicated to protecting private property and not actually other measures of public safety? But I think as a big picture, how can officers better connect with the community? Is to actually be accountable to the work that they do, the things that they do wrong and to have that dialogue with the community.
To agree, I know you had a lot. You had a lot, but. And we do have a question coming up about trust and accountability later too, so you have more chance. Anyone else? Community policing, yeah.
In general, I'd say that our police department has made a lot of efforts in that regard. And, uh, in general, I believe that our police department has made a lot of efforts in that regard and that police, whether they're getting training or, um, it's there, it's just, um, principles of accountability or whatever is going on. I do think they are making great efforts and that they have made great strides and they do come across as very friendly. And I often do have to call the police regarding, uh, people in the park who are somewhat suspect using drugs, unhoused, um, on the premises, often behind or around the scout house, which is a house, as everybody knows, for children to be meeting at. Um, and I do notice that when they come, they're, they're friendly. Uh, they, um, do work very hard not to be threatening, uh, to, to try to engage everybody, including the unhoused people. So I have to give them high scores on efforts and on what they're doing.
Right there. You got a couple more hands up. Hold on one second. Let me walk the room.
I'm one of the neighborhood watch captains for our neighborhood. And so that's one of the things I think the police are doing well is the neighborhood watch program, sending out the information. Um, I, but I'm oftentimes surprised because I have friends who are like, how do you have all this information? You know, like, can I get, can I get on your email list? Because I send out emails to everybody about what's happening. And there's a lot of parts of the community that don't have a neighborhood watch. And they like to keep them small, like usually just like, like one large block area so that it's much more community. And we also use that as like, oh, I'm going on vacation. Can everyone else keep an eye on my house? We use it for like a lot of different, you know, that kind of safety stuff. Um, so I think maybe trying to, um, a concerted effort to expand the community watch to neighborhoods that don't have it.
In regard to the, what's your name again? Ellen? In regard to the things that Judith has noticed. Uh, as I said, in the past year, I've been working with, uh, the PD department. And with, uh, with, because of my legal background and my focus on domestic violence, I have been working with them on reporting where their officers could stand improvement. And initial contact was through one of the officers who would then put that into training scripts. And the focus was to be that I would actually come in on some roll calls. We hadn't gotten to when that would happen or how frequently. But, uh, I would be going in and actually making a presentation to them during roll call, like five minutes, to give them pointers. And it sound from what Judith is saying is that, uh, the feedback that I've been sending to the officer has been received, heard, learned and enacted. And I'm very glad to hear what she has to say and report.
All right. So what I'm hearing is that I keep hearing that things are, are getting worse a little bit. Well, then we need to increase services to meet the demand. So that means if you're going to expand this, if you're going to grow this and do this, then you need to fund the department more to support all these programs that we're going to implement. So I also support volunteers. I support community service, grant writing, trying to get prioritization of all these different things that are needed to support this. So we should be increasing the budget to increase. Not decreasing, increasing, because if crime is increasing, then you have to, not.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we'll go to our next question. Trust. How can the South Pasadena Police Department provide greater transparency and accountability? What would build trust?
Something that would help, that helped me with transparency is on high-profile cases is to, is to let us know like what steps in general, what steps need to be taken. I mean, we know you kind of have to talk to witnesses and photograph the area and so on. But it's nice if you would be able to put out a release immediately on high-profile cases and say, well, what, these are the steps. This is the approximate timeline that's going to have to happen. Also, the authorities, I mean, who makes the decisions? We're always looking at the police department. Well, sometimes it's not the police department's, uh, uh, authority decide whether or not they arrest a person or hold a person. That might be up to the DA. That might be a law that was written. So it's on the politicians. So if we're, if you're transparent about that, like, well, we had to make this, this decision because of this other thing. Then you can put our, our, our efforts in the right direction. So on the high-profile cases, it'd be, it'd be nice to have that out pretty much immediately and then maybe updates. Uh, fairly regularly, I don't know how quickly some of these things do. And, um, yeah, okay. And then I was saying like, uh, repeat crimes or crime trends such as the, uh, uh, catalytic converter thefts. Cause we know the police were working on it, but we didn't, again, we didn't know what steps, where they had gotten or how they were coordinating with other, other departments and other areas to get anywhere. And so being, and I know we, they did do some arrests and be nice to know, oh, what kind of led up to that? And, and to know, are they still working on things like that? Is the same focus going to work? Or is there something new they have to do? So that would, that would help me with the transparency portion of it.
Good evening, commissioners. I think that they can't hear you on Zoom because this microphone is not part of the system anyway. Um, so I just want to start with saying that there is a competing meeting tonight for tenant protection. So I really encourage you guys, if you can, to hold another meeting because the advocacy community in South Pass is very small. And we are split currently between these two really important issues. Um, so if you are able to schedule another meeting before your scope of work is over, I think that would be really great so that other folks can join. Um, as Helen mentioned, you know, the sort of genesis for this assessment, at least as far as the community is concerned, was a number of complaints related to events that happened in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, and so, you know, we had submitted public comments asking for the assessment to include a number of metrics that I don't see in your scope of work. And, you know, if it's possible to include them, I think that would be great. Um, you know, you mentioned transparency. We had asked for transparency in terms of not just, uh, calls for service, but also stops and arrests, which I gather this, the police department is now taking information about stops and, you know, raising ethnicity of people who are stopped. Um, we also wanted to know type of offense, sex, age, residency of arrestees. You know, in our dream scenario, this would look like a dashboard that is consistently updated and we can see as a community, how does this look? As Helen mentioned, um, you know, our group gathered data through a Public Records Act request and we gave it to professors at Occidental College. They published a report. You can go find it on our website, carefirstsouthpass.com. And, um, we didn't, we weren't even able to get them, the professors from Occidental, in front of this commission to present their findings. So that shows a real lack of willingness to engage about data. And maybe some of these data are not flattering for the department. They didn't want to talk about it. And that to me is a real problem for building trust. Um, you know, I think some of the other things we had asked for in our comments was for the assessor to look at communications between officers, social media posts, complaints against police officers for bias and prejudice. So again, I don't see that in your scope of work. We would have really hoped to see that and hopefully you can still add it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Victoria Patterson. I'm, I'm going to read a statement that I wrote. Okay. Um, "The city's unprecedented $500,000 settlement of our civil rights lawsuit against its police force serves both as a signal that all is not right in the city of South Pasadena and a call to action. In its press release, the city's only explanation for the costly settlement is that the city council authorized it in the interest of resolving the matter. The significant monetary award is an obvious acknowledgement of the personal harm the city's police force inflicted on us for exercising our right to protest for racial justice and police accountability. However, the city has thus far made no commitment to change any of its practices to ensure that what happened to us cannot happen again. Nor has it taken any steps to rein in the documented bias in its police force. We continue, we continue to demand that it do both of these things. In the summer of twenty twenty, many community members joined us in our protests and also watched in horror as we were repeatedly attacked by anti-Black Lives Matter counter protesters. In response, the city's police department turned a blind eye to the attacker, attackers, and worse, took their side. It also purposefully excluded us for mandated hate crime, crimes protections and publicly disparaged us in the BLM movement. Ironically, the city stated as its official litigation position in response to our First Amendment claims that the offending officer's biased views were protected as they had a right to free speech and could voice their opinions. In light of these and other revelations laid bare in our lawsuit, the city has a lot of explaining to do about how it will root out such known and documented biases among its police officers as required by law under AB six-five-five, the Clear Act. Indeed, this is a police force that was populated by at least five to six officers known by the city council to be affiliated with the Oath Keepers at the time of the transgressions against us. This is a police force whose current watch commander gratuitously referred to BLM protesters as the usual suspects. This is a police force whose officers freely joked about pretextually, pretextually arresting Farin James in retaliation for her activism. This is a police force whose own detective unit found that one of Farin James' attackers, Richard Cheney, was engaged in the misdemeanor of reckless driving when he jumped the curb in his truck to intimidate her from engaging in protest activity, but whose top brass inexplicably refused to cite him for it or any of a number of vehicle code infractions. Clearly, the city has a long way to go to demonstrate true accountability for its failure to protect our constitutional rights. To date, not a single officer has suffered any discipline for their biased and other unlawful conduct or any real consequence at all. But after a settlement of this magnitude, it can no longer be business as usual for the city of South, for the, for the city. We in the community are waiting and watching for it to do more and better. The city being the first in the U.S. to purchase Teslas to replace the police department's entire fleet doesn't surprise me, though it disappoints me. The city likes to present well while ignoring deep-rooted problems. I no longer feel safe in the community I've lived in for close to thirty years and it's because of the police. In late March, my catalytic converter was stolen. I called the SPPD so that it could be included in the records. The dispatcher said that she'd send a police officer to my home and I asked her not to. I have lost faith in my city and its police force. This makes me incredibly sad. Thanks.
Thank you. I really would like to keep the statements to minimum. We are interviewing Care First tomorrow, as you know. We'd like to keep the statements. We really like to focus here as much as possible, but certainly. Okay, that's fine. So thank you. We just want to stay on target and let everyone have a chance. Please, go ahead.
I, I had prepared a statement, but I didn't realize what the format of this was. And this prompt is actually an appropriate time for me to make my statement. So my name is Labon Ihak. I represented Farin James and, um, Victoria Patterson, um, in the civil lawsuit that she just spoke about, which the city, um, settled for $500,000. I'm also a resident of the city. I've lived here for about fifteen years and I'm a civil rights lawyer. Um, while the monetary settlement was a first step that the city had to take to resolve a lot of these issues, there's a lot more that needs to be done. Um, I'd encourage you all, if you haven't already, to take a look at our complaint and read it and make sure that the city accounts for all of the things that we've alleged. Um, none of which have, they've been able to effectively defend. Um, the statements that Tori just made came straight from the complaint and there's been no rebutting of any of that. Those are really serious issues. Oath Keepers on the force has a huge amount to do with public trust and feeling of, of, of being safe. Um, we do now have the Clear Act and I think the city is obligated to tell us what it has done in response to its own investigator, Wyatt. His own report is what revealed a lot of what we, we've been alleging here. And again, there's been no accountability for that. Uh, we also specifically asked for a lot of things for the city to do in terms of, um, non-monetary, um, accountability. And I just wanted to read some of those here to make sure that those are part of what you would be potentially seeking, having the city do here. Among them was establishment of a complaint hotline and community review process aimed at improving public trust in the South Pasadena Police Department. Mandatory use and activation of police body cameras and the recording of all phone calls between police officers and members of the public. Including as part of an ongoing review, the city is doing of its police department, background checks for current and prospective police officers. That includes their social media accounts and any other public records to assess any bias they may have that would subject them to, uh, the obligations, as I mentioned, under the Clear Act. And finally, public publication of a set of apologies, acknowledgements and pledges with respect to specific acts and omissions attributed to the city and its officers in connection with the events leading to the litigation. Um, I'd encourage anyone who's listening here today, the Public Safety Commission, to follow up on those, those things and stand with us in making sure that the police department is truly accountable for what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on trust? Some good points about accountability and trust?
Helen again from Care First South Pasadena. Um, I just want to underscore something that Ella said about the structure of the Public Safety Commission. It's made and authorized to serve as an advisory committee to the city council on public safety issues. But the police chief also sits as, um, a member of the commission. And it's up to the police chief to decide what gets onto the agenda. It, in, um, at the same time was maybe the chair of the Public Safety Commission and the city council. So it's been impossible for us when we raise issues by emailing the Public Safety Commission, various council members, even the police chief to get any item in front of the commission. Um, so one recommendation that Care First wants to advance is to create an actual oversight commission and not, not just an advisory commission. with no teeth to hold the police department accountable. There's no existing body right now in the city to actually do that. And I think as consultants, it would be really helpful if you can outline a framework of how to establish that within the city.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, we've got one comment here and then if they want to put their hand back.
I'm not clear on what accountability you're talking about. The thing I think that's most important, the people who do damage, people who do crime should also be held accountable mostly for breaking anything, for damaging people, damaging property, killing people. Those people should be held accountable. The police are the ones who are enforcing it. I support the police. To tell me that the police have had some accountability and then ignore the other? No. The two ways to be. Accountability should be made on the perpetrator.
Thank you. Is our Zoom person back? Okay, great. If they'd like to speak.
Hello, Mr. Kelly. You can go ahead and speak.
Are you there? Mr. Kelly? Can you unmute?
Hello, Mr. Kelly. You're still on mute.
Hey, Mr. Kelly, if you're trying to make a comment, we, we can't seem to hear you, but let us know if you want to and we're going to move on to our next question. Interactions. Have you personally interacted with the South Pasadena Police Department? And if so, how would you describe that interaction?
For the sake of input, uh, yes. Each time an officer, each time I contact dispatcher and each time they actually send an officer to my property, I have interacted with them. I significantly remember in this year, there was something that happened on my property and the dispatcher listened to what I had to say and then said, did your neighbors talk to you about this? And that's the first time any of the dispatchers have asked me that question, especially when it involved my next door neighbor. The next thing is each time an officer has come out and investigated a trespass or some vandalism, they've made suggestions, constructive suggestions about what to do to improve the security and make things better. And I, each time as I've analyzed, I analyze things to death. As I've analyzed the suggestion and possible options, those suggestions have proven to be very effective.
Anyone else with interactions with the police that they'd like to describe? Okay, Mr. Kelly, you'd like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to go back to the previous slide related to trust. I, I am active with Care First and I want to align my comments with what previously has been said by members of Care First and others. Having said that, I have some specific suggestions regarding trust and accountability. One of the things I think that the community needs is to see data in real time on a dashboard on the website that would include the data about the, the race and ethnicity of those who are arrested and, and pulled over, that sort of thing under state law. The other thing is Care First had gathered through the Public Records Act 10 years of data and, and five year, five years of arrest data and 10 years, I think, of data on dispatches. And it showed a disproportionate number of black and Hispanic people were being arrested, black and Latino here in South Pasadena. That was brushed off. This was analyzed by Occidental College professors, data experts, reputable professors. That was simply brushed off as, well, those are the people passing through town. That's, that's why it looks disproportionate. How do we know that? No one has ever asked for any data, looked at any data. We don't really know about the ethnicities of people who are driving through town. So I, I believe that your company should look at that report and seek to provide answers to the community as to why that discrepancy, which would seem to indicate bias, exists and has existed now for 10, you know, five years, 10 years. You know, certainly, uh, the community deserves that much. And I believe also a dashboard that shows information in real time. Because basically, uh, there's an awful lot that people don't know, either about what's going on in the community or about what the police are doing or not doing. And people are paying for a police department. It's, it's the biggest portion of the city budget. And I'm not saying we don't need police. I think we do. But I think that there needs to be metrics and accountability for how the police operate. And it could be that they're overfunded. And I think that needs to, to be supposedly the budget was done as a zero based budget this year. But again, there was no data. There are no metrics. I think we need to bring that across City Hall into the police department, particularly because it's the largest driver of spending and taxation here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we logged was dashboard and real time data, getting arrest and race and gender information and metrics. And then also to address any culture of bias for the policing. So that's what we logged from your comment. Thank you.
There's just one final note. I noticed that we're talking about the virtual community. Not everybody is in the virtual community. If you want to have trust, you need to get people in the real world. It's not the virtual world. Not everybody goes on the internet and looks it up. You want to publicize it, make it so that everybody can see it. Not everybody is in the virtual community. We need to be in the real world. This is the real world right here. We're talking to each other. In the virtual community, we never talk to each other.
Any other Zoom calls? Okay, thank you. So the last question we have is an open ended one. What did we not talk about that's important to know? What is missing here? We'd love to hear your thoughts.
Okay. I don't know if the police department is already doing this or not, but I'm just going to go over all of this anyway. And that's training for nonviolent crime, such as wage theft, scams, ID theft, fraud, insurance fraud, tax cheats, defamation, minor incidents that seem like vandalism or, or, or low level harassment, things like that. And I know the police department is not going to respond personally to all of those. But the police department is our first point of contact for many of us if something like that happens. If ID theft happens to me, I'm probably going to go to the police department and say, what should I do about this? And the police department is going to say, well, you have to contact this agency and here's their contact information and so on and so on. And I'd like to have, make sure the training is already in place for, for all these sort of nonviolent crimes. So they know where to, to direct me. Or if the police department is tasked to gather information first. Or if they know the agent is going, is going to ask me to show up with certain information. So if they can help me with all of that ahead of time. And then I, I know, oh, where I can go here and the police department treated me like it's so serious. They just didn't blow me off. Then that helps the whole, whole system. So again, I'd rather have the training ahead of time rather than when somebody comes up and then I, I don't know, I got to ask around. Another area I'd like to have training ahead of time is union busting. Cause unions and strikes are becoming more prevalent. And we have a number of businesses in the city. And so it'd be nice to know, nice to make sure that the police know ahead of time what actions they are supposed to take in response to strikes. And rather than have, uh, you know, maybe a heavy handed response or, or misapplied response. And then that turns into another lawsuit and more money out of our pockets. The second whole issue I'd like to talk about is partnering with non-police agencies. I know that we're already beginning to do that with the homeless, but also like with wellness checks. I don't know if that's part of the homeless or if it's another area, but homeless, homeless checks. And I don't know why we send police instead of paramedics to check out if a wellness check. That's, that's where I would call first. And also negotiator, excuse me, negotiators for domestic disputes and neighborhood disputes. I believe there are people out there and agencies out there who are specifically trained in negotiating those areas rather than police who are sort of more generalist. So if there's, if we can, again, partner with those agencies and bring them in on those areas, that'd be great. That's my two areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? What are we missing?
It would be extremely helpful. I think it was mentioned in the introduction. Having an electronic means of reporting a crime, especially the lower level crimes, an electronic means of reporting the crime where not only the report, the person who's making the report can make the written report, but also attach photos if there are photos that will shore up what is being reported, but having an online reporting system where it's not a violent crime.
Along those, I think, I know how to use it. Along those lines, I do think that some of the personnel in the office could use some extra customer service training. When I have tried to report crimes or when I do see the unhoused people using crack or weed or whatever in the park and I call, I get, I myself feel like I'm going through the third degree to make a report. And I don't think that that is very inviting. So I think the people that are answering the phones and the front office people could, could use some training on community policing and customer service. There's, there's improvement needed there.
We've already talked about the negative aspects of things. Let's talk about positive. What about getting the local community positive reinforcement for the police service or the services they contribute to make it more public, more proper? That's how you do it. You do it through positive reinforcement. You talk about things that need to be reported. I don't hear that. I not hear the option. We need reinforcement, positive improvement. We need community support for services to try to offer to save.
This is in response to, I believe, your comment. There is an app, I don't know if you guys know about this. There's an app called South Pasadena App. And you can report certain items on there such as graffiti and issues with public works and things like that. So I don't know if you want to add police, not police reports, but certain issues to that app. And again, I didn't know if you two knew about that already. Anyone else?
So I just wanted to talk briefly to wrap things up about the next steps for our process. Want to thank everybody first off on Zoom and here for your input. Truly, we do appreciate, we do listen and hear this all. And we've notated it all and we'll take it back for our notes and our, our document review and input along with the surveys as Cassandra talked about. Our next steps are that we're going to finalize this. We're going to finalize the surveys. The surveys are good through this week. Again, the community survey. So we really encourage anyone, if they haven't done it yet, to please do that. And I've got the link on the next slide. So we'll throw that up there in a second. We're going to finalize our analysis and our, and develop our recommendations for the city. And then we're going to be drafting that report and presenting it to a city council meeting. My understanding is in August is our target. I, I haven't had it scheduled yet. And then we're going to gather additional public input at that meeting as well, some response to our report, any thoughts? And then we'll finalize that report. So that's really where we're going from here. So we're, we're about two thirds of the way through. We've got, you know, the end of June and July, and then in August, hopefully we'll be done. So that's where we are. The community survey is here. If anyone wants to take that still or take a photo of that slide, feel free. It's open through this Saturday, so the 11th. So we welcome folks to participate in that. Again, we're taking all that information and it's going into our big pot that we stir up that helps us come up with all the information to make recommendations. And with that, I will conclude and we will thank the commission and just say thank you. I'll leave this up for another moment, please. And here is our contact information. Again, I'm Rebecca Hoskin. This is Cassandra Depp Brown from RaffTalus. And we thank the commissioners as well. If you have any comments or questions, we're happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you both. And thank you for everyone that was here. Monday mornings can feel very lonely when we regularly meet. It's great to have vibrant input and voices raised to express your opinions. So thank you very much for participating, also those on Zoom. So to close out the meeting, we have three more items. Michael, do you have anything as far as city council liaison?
Great. Versus a number of outreach activity by the outreach team, supplemental outreach team we've refunded. And I noticed that the first several months, I guess, as a transition, we anticipated would be slow. For different, the three police departments that are involved in our cohort, South Pass, San Marino and Arcadia to adopt this co-response model. It's picked up in the last couple of months, I think, mainly because South Pass really has got a couple really champions in the police department. Our dispatch, so Blado and one of the officers, I'm trying to, uh, names, I can't remember right now, Fernando something. Really championing to work with his outreach program. So the calls have been going up. I'm concerned because, you know, it worked very hard for three years to make this happen with our police department, with the COG that I sit on and prior to that Diane. And working with Mr. Portantino to get that 850,000, continue this for a couple of years and no cost to the city. And Judy Chu's office. So I'm really pushing it. Even one of our commissioners had asked for a So I'm really pushing it. Even one of our commissioners had asked for a meeting or do a ride-along. I brought up, I'd called him twice and never got a response. And I said, this is unacceptable. I said, now I see why the public is so upset with the homeless initiative. And it may not pass billions of dollars that go unmonitored. Said, I want to, I want to go on ride-alongs. I want to see their office. You know, I've been really pushing this from the beginning. And I don't want them to just think this is an easy contract. And, and a number of other cities are trying to follow our model, which is the only model in the San Gabriel Valley, only the second in the state as a leader in this area. So just to let you know, we're, we're on it. I'm on it. Lieutenant Blado was in the meeting, staff was in the meeting. And we're like, you're, like some of the comments, they were really trying to get these, the reporting. And I was told that the, LaCotta has some issues with their computer service. So hope you look at this too as, as this next year progresses. And that we're, we're refining this program. So we're determining how much, and actually as part of this, I'm not sure if we were. We only had the outreach team for a couple of hours on a Friday. We'll get them for a full day now after pushing for this for several months. And the SGV Care, which is they respond the calls. And again, it's about a fifty-fifty unhoused versus housed, schools, businesses. I'd like you to look at it and see your thoughts on, do we put more effort in the outreach or more in the crisis response team? So again, I see this as just in our area, but I can imagine what's happening countywide, why there's so, like, nobody monitors these things. Billions of dollars. I'm having trouble monitoring a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract. Can you imagine the housing and the homeless initiative of billions? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And if you could be persistent about setting up that ride-along, that would be great. Staff liaison, Allison. I know Chief is on the Zoom.
I don't believe staff has anything additional to add. Is the chief raised his hand? I don't believe we have any. No.
Okay. And then Commissioner Communications, Commissioner G.
I want to say thank you to everybody who's come today. I want you to know that you're, you're heard. I hear a lot of things that have come up. I want to just reflect back upon what I heard from you. I heard that the couple Cs, that number one, communication is important in regards to accountability, building trust and wanting to, I guess, get more publicizing from our end done. Number two, I heard caution signs that we need a lot of them, whether that comes in the form of flashing lights, more lighting overall, speed bumps, all of this, which is public works and infrastructure. Number three, I heard that you want to clean up the city to feel safer, such as alleys vandalism, sanitation. And number four, I heard community policing, wanting customer service training, wanting diversity training. So I want you to know that you're heard. I've heard you today. I'll definitely bring this up in terms of the, you, you know, you brought up all those Cs that I brought up. And there's a couple Ms. that I'm going to work on. Number one, marketing. I do feel that outreach is more important than crisis management at this time because I feel that the community is not feeling that there is not enough communication going on. So number two, management of training programs, which I've already touched upon. And number three, I personally would like to see a map your neighborhood component that we can involve the community and the students with. Thank you.
Commissioner Watson?
Just thank you, everybody, for participating today. I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Sabates?
Yes, I wanted to thank all the people that took the time to come and let us know their concerns. And I believe they're all very valid. I believe that we, unless we hear from you, we won't know. So it is very important. And you raised some very valid points. And among the points you raised were this trust, this what you call, or the one that just pointing fingers at the police, but not giving them credit for keeping South Pasadena, one of the safest communities in the whole LA area. That's the reason I bought this house forty years ago. So they do deserve the credit. Of course, they're not perfect. No one is. But it's a work in progress. And I think the main, main thing we need to address here is that the diversity training, and by diversity training, I don't mean a certain race or certain age or whatever. I mean, all of the above. I mean, we have to have people representing the, all the colors of the rainbow. We don't only have white anymore like we used to have in seventies and eighties. Now we have yellow, we have brown like me, we have black. And we, and, and we have Arabs. We have to address that and learn our folks. They have been living under what they were taught that were the rules of engagement were in nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty. It's time for them to find out that things have changed since and we want them to change. However, it doesn't mean that we want to do away with them. Because I can't imagine what this place would be like without police. I'm sorry. It's just, it, it's one like a a total nonsense because I, if you ever drive to places like Highland Park or downtown LA and all that, and you come back to South Pasadena, you say, thank God for South Pasadena. So on that note, I think we have accomplished much. Oh, and I forgot. When we mentioned the different, the diversity, I mean, we need to take into account people who have disabilities. And their disabilities, you cannot see, but they're in the head. And they have to be addressed. You have to be. And, and that's what the main thing, my main focus on this is these folks need to be made aware of what it is that we need, of our needs. But also we need to give them the tools that they need to do this job. So at this point, all I want to say is I'm very grateful because you came. And otherwise I would have never heard from this, from you. And I'm thankful I got an earful. And, oh, and I forgot the other community, my community. That's a senior citizen commu- community that's so often forgotten. I mean, it seems like by the time you get past sixty-five, you become a non-entity. You just kind of don't count. Things are made, are done for only the young people. But now you should take into account older folks vote, older folks have needs. We have to take them into account as well. So that's what, for me, the meaning of diversity is. But what I would like to end in a positive note, and that is that we have a great community. We have a police department that has been trying. They're not perfect. And I am so relieved to know that they took the time to come and visit our friend here whenever she called and talk to her. And that matters, that means so much, especially for an older person. So let's keep up the good work. Let's try to form, let's say, Neighborhood Watch to help out the police. Let's, let's see what we can do also to do our part. Because you know, no matter how many more policemen we hire, they're still going to be thoroughly overwhelmed by the number of citizens. And we're not talking about the twenty-five thousand people that live in South Pasadena. But we're talking about all the folks that use South Pasadena as a throughfare. And when they see those pretty manicured lawns and those Teslas parked there, they get all the wrong ideas. At least in my case, they think I'm rich. I'm not. So, you know, it's like, we need to help them. We need to step forward and help. And together we can work this out. Thank you.
That's a tough act to follow. But thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. It was really interesting to hear your input. And I definitely heard some new perspectives that I hadn't fully considered before. So I know our Monday morning meetings are not easy to get to, but we really appreciate you coming and hope that you can join more meetings in the future. And I look forward to speaking with you tomorrow for my interview. So thank you for your time tonight and with all of us as you continue the project.
But it's, it's also reassuring to know that we're discussing those things and not major violent crime in this city. But I would like to know if, if, I don't know which, who brought it up about, if possible, having a second opportunity to see if we could have another input from additional community members. I know there are a lot of busy people in the city, but I hear from so many people just in my daily communication with them. And it would be nice, I don't know how to communicate to that, to them to, that these meetings, attending these meetings and putting their voice in front of us is so important. So I'd, I'd like to look into that, possible. It may not be possible, but.
Okay. Once again, thank you. I think all of us have voiced our appreciation for those who participated tonight. And I'd just like to leave you with this. As of last Monday, only about seventy people had responded to the online survey. So those of you who are here tonight or online tonight and know that this is an important topic and it's a great way to improve our quality of life here in, in South Pasadena, encourage your friends and neighbors to take a few minutes and just fill out the survey. It's anonymous. They can say anything they want, positive or negative. But the more voices we hear, the better results we'll get. So that said, thank you all. It is eight twenty-four, meeting adjourned.